Welcome, it is Thursday, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Welcome to Woodstock City Council. This meeting is being held electronically in accordance with section two thirty-eight, subsection three point three of the municipal act and section sixteen point six point two four of the city of Woodstock procedural bylaw. This meeting is being livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel. And a recording will be posted on the city's website following the meeting. The meeting will also be broadcast on Rogers TV. An agenda of the meeting can be found on the agendas, meetings, and minutes page of the city's website. Counselors will be raising their hands in view of the webcam when moving a motion, requesting to speak, and when a vote is being taken. If a member of council is disconnected or having technical difficulties, we will take a recess in order to attempt to rectify the issue. If technical difficulties exist that prevent the meeting from continuing, the meeting will be adjourned and reconvened at a later time. If a counselor needs to leave the meeting at any time, they're requested to inform the clerk. And with that, I would ask that the counselors now join and turn on their webcams. There we are, welcome everyone. Any disclosure of conflict of interest? Seeing none, disclosure of new business. Counselor Schattenberg.
Yes, thanks, Al Mayor. I wasn't sure if I was supposed to read the entire item under new business, but I likely am required to do so. Counselor Mark Schattenberg will put forward the following motion for council's consideration under the new business. And then here's the motion, whereas section six point zero point one of the environmental test back requires that a proponent mentioned in section three, found accordance with subsection five, obtain municipal support when they're taking of each local municipality is defined in section four, and that the proponent shall provide to the ministry a copy of the municipal code resolution for each local municipality in respect of which municipal support is required under subsection four, indicating the municipality supports the undertaking to establish a waste disposal site that is a landfill site. And whereas Walker Environmental Group has proposed that the southwest landfill be located in Zora Township. And whereas the township of Zora is a local municipality is defined in subsection four of the act and has passed a resolution that does not support the undertaking to establish the waste disposal site. And whereas the city of Woodstock is not a local municipality is defined in subsection four of the act, but wants to indicate its support for the decision of Zora Township. Therefore, be a result of the city of Woodstock does does not support the undertaking to establish a waste disposal site as proposed in Zora Township, and that this resolution, if passed, will be sent to the town of Fingersaw Township of Southwest Oxford, a township of Zora, Oxford County MPP, Ernie Hardiman, the Minister of the Environment, Conservation of Parks, the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, Opal Stop the Dump Alliance, and the Walker Environmental Group, and that'll be, I guess, seen under new business.
Thank you, and yeah, we'll deal with that later on the agenda if we have a second or on that motion. Sure, we will. And next up, we have the matters arising from the minutes, and there's none. So our minutes from our last meeting held June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. Mover, Counselor Lauder, and a seconder. Counselor Petter.
Move by myself and second by Counselor Petter, that the that the minutes of the regular meeting of the Woodstock City Council held on June the seventeenth, twenty twenty-one be adopted.
Thank you. Any errors or omissions in the minutes? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor. And carries unanimous. No additions to the agenda or presentations, and our delegation has been withdrawn. So we'll move right along to consideration of correspondence. So our first item is in regards to the Terry Fox Run, the forty-first year here in the friendly city, and we'll go move by Counselor Tate, seconded by Counselor Schattenberg.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council supports the use of electronic signboards at Dundas and Springbank and Finkle Street from August first, twenty twenty-one until September nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, and supports the request to place signs around the city and defy the Terry Fox flag at Museum Square on Dundas Street, September thirteenth to the twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Support of the forty-first annual Terry Fox Run.
Thank you. Discussion. And Counselor Schattenberg.
As a member of the Alliance Club of Woodstock, as is Counselor Jerry Acioni, certainly want to congratulate John Versavon and his years and years of a dedication to maintaining and considering a separate and outside organizing committee to keep the Terry Fox Run going in the in city Woodstock, especially after the passing of Bill Gillespie, of course, was also Alliance Club member. I'd be about four years ago now, but John Versavon has been co-chairing that committee for his third year now and does a terrific job running the Terry Fox Run in the city of Woodstock, keeping that tradition going.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor. And carries unanimous. And so again, that is the run taking place on September nineteenth. And next on the agenda is a run on the same weekend. This is for the V O N Secura House, and we'll go with Counselor Petter and seconded by Counselor Talbot.
Yes, I move that Woodstock City Council supports the V O N Oxford and Secura House request to replace signs on city boulevards, parkland, and trail entrances from August first to September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, in support of Hike for Hospice fundraiser.
Thank you. And discussion? We'll go Counselor Petter.
I just want to make sure the two requesters maybe get together and and work each on each other's signs. It might save a volunteer from from putting too many hours in. If they could buddy up, they'll, the the dates look very similar.
Well, and I think they have done a little of that in the past, and also unlike election signs, there isn't necessarily the competition or trying to block out the other people. What a great community we have where so many volunteers come together for such great causes. And further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor. And carries unanimous. And the correspondence has been withdrawn for nine C. No, no staff presentations, mayor's reports, or council reports. So we'll move right along to administrative services and the statement of revenue and expenditures ended June thirtieth, Counselor Talbot, and a seconder Counselor Lauder. Thank you.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council receive the statement of revenue and expenditure and the statement of capital expenditures for the period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one as information.
Thank you. Discussion. Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor. And carries unanimous. And then we're on to Patullo Avenue Industrial Site, the tendering award for the servicing, and we'll go Counselor Acioni and Counselor Schattenberg.
Thank you, worship. Move by myself, the Woodstock City Council awarded tender for the Patullo Avenue Industrial Site. Phase one construction project to Bree X Construction, Inc. In the amount of five million, three hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-two cents, inclusive of H S D.
Thank you. Discussion. And oh, Counselor Schattenberg.
I was just gonna say, like most of us, I'm certainly one of those people who like to to Google things. Trevor, and and one thing I did was to look up Bree X Construction and see the fullest of projects and pictures of things they've done in the city of London and elsewhere. Bree X Construction might now be very well known to people in Woodstock for large, large projects, but very well known for Southern Ontario. So if you're curious about what Bree X Construction, because you check out their website, it's quite massive buildings of new streets in particular, new areas, and in particular in London.
Thank you. And I think they'll get started to work right away with the help of our engineering department and our consultant on that project. If council votes in favor of this, and of course, for the listeners at home, this came in quite a bit under budget, so very good news for the new areas that we're working on for employment lands. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor. And carries unanimous. And next up, we have the amendments to the traffic bylaw, and this includes a lot of changes due to the new bus stops and relocation of certain bus stops as we get ready for the seventh route. And it also has some stop signs on some of the new streets and another change to the fire route. So we'll go with Counselor Tate and a seconder Counselor Lauder. Thank you.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council further report regarding amendments to traffic bylaw eight oh two one dash oh four and municipal code chapter four sixty-six to the bylaw section of the meeting.
Thank you. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor. And carries. So after the bylaws passed and some of these signs start to go up, just remind the residents to take note and a few areas where some of the stops have been removed, you'll actually see more parking in those areas again. So just keep an eye on the signs. Next up, we have the Community Improvement Plan Agreement for four sixty-seven and four sixty-nine Dundas, and this is the building directly across from Museum Square. And with the programs that we have in place, they're looking to have four new units upstairs, which is good for the downtown and a reinvigorated facade. So Counselor Acioni and a seconder. Counselor Talbot, thank you.
And move by myself, the Woodstock City Council approved the Community Improvement Plan application for four sixty-seven to four sixty-nine Dundas Street. As described above, and the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign the necessary agreements.
Thank you. Discussion. And Counselor Schattenberg.
Thanks, Al Mason. Maybe just the statement to worship, and that's the the fact that there's one sentence here that I think is worth reading, especially because since I know that not everyone's going to be reading word for word of the agendas, people watching at home anyway. Since the program's inception, there have been thirty-three approved plans with more than one million dollars granted or loan, resulting in more than fifteen million in new investment in the downtown area. And I think that's very important that that's coming from from council and the and the community improvement plan that's been in well, just over a decade now, or so that that's that's been going well before my time on council, and it's a it's a terrific project to gradually gradually improve facades and so much more downtown.
Very good points. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor. And carries unanimous. And next up, we have the corporate reorganization, and this is in regards to our I T and removing it from the administrative services to have it as a standalone department reporting to the C A O, which seems to be a good use of the resources and in comparison to how other municipalities operate, and of course, a lot of the issues that the city has dealt with over the last few years. So looking for a mover and a seconder on that one, and we'll go Counselor Talbot and Counselor Petter. Thank you.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council authorize management to establish information information technology as an independent department reporting to the C A O.
Thank you. Discussion. Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor. And carries unanimous. And I think I T will probably send some memos to friends on the other side of the world saying they're not welcome in our systems anymore. Let's see, next up, we have good use at the Enviro Depot over the last three years, and we want to make sure that we have additional bins. So there's no delays when people are bringing in those items to be recycled. So let's see, we'll go a mover, Counselor Tate, and a seconder Counselor Lauder.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council approve the purchase of four additional forty-yard bins and one additional twenty-yard bin to be financed from the equipment reserve.
Thank you. Discussion. And we'll go Counselor Lauder and then Counselor Schattenberg.
I just wanted to thank all the staff that works down there, and it just goes to prove that that the people are really finding this a valuable thing that we brought into our city. And it it's it's just great that we can do that. I know people it's not available in a lot of cities, and people do like to take their things down there when they're ready as to wait for the collection days that we used to have. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Schattenberg.
I'd like to see a debut here, performance by Dan Locke, our director of Public Works, to be able to maybe describe the the shuffling of these bins when we get to have these very busy days where everyone's bringing their garbage or recycling down to James Street.
Well, first off, good afternoon. Thank you for for recognizing me and and having me on. Yeah, through the they're through the mayor, the the goal here is to kind of make the the user having the same experience, so no delays in the lineup. So right now, when bins become full and we crush, so we bring a loader and crush it, get a little bit more use out of that bin. And then they're hauled off to Salford, the Oxford County landfill. So there's a delay, and if we have these bins, then we can reduce that delay on any of the heavy use days. So every user should experience pretty much the same experience, right?
Thank you. Further discussion, Counselor Talbot.
Thank you, worship. Maybe through to Dan, this is something that you could maybe provide in the future, because since you're just new to the position here and welcome. We used to have a large item pickup quite often throughout the city, and it's being reduced, as you know, because of the Enviro Depot. It'd be interesting to know if we're actually taking more to Salford or if we're taking less, because I I personally, I love the depot. It's so handy, and you know, if you get a few items, you can just go up and it just runs so smoothly. And with the new hours, I find that's very helpful as well, too, but I guess would be interesting to know whether we're taking more or we're taking less.
Sure. Thank you. Through the mayor. We can certainly look at a year-end type of a report that would include all the metrics of collection on those numbers.
That would be perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor. And carries unanimous. And next up, we have the repealing of some outdated council policies and updating the Woodstock Art Gallery bylaws. And let's see, we'll go with Counselor Lauder and a seconder. Counselor Acioni, thank you.
Thank you. I'll move that Woodstock City Council repeal the outdated policies that pertain to collections management, C S zero twelve and facility rental, C S zero eleven, and approve the proposed changes to the municipal code chapter thirty-two, Art Gallery Advisory Board, and that the necessary bylaw be read.
Thank you. Discussion. And seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor. And carries unanimous. Thank you. And next up, we have the Boundary Adjustment Committee Report regarding Isora Tavistock. And let's see, we'll go with Counselor Acioni and Counselor Schattenberg.
Yeah, move by myself, the Woodstock City Council approved the Boundary Adjustment Proposal from the Township of Isora Tavistock dated July seventh, twenty twenty-one. In principle, and that staff be directed to initiate the public consultation process subject to approval in principle by the Township of Isora Tavistock Council.
Thank you. Discussion. And we'll go Counselor Petter.
Yeah, through the mayor, I'd just like to thank the three counselors that were on the committee for all the work they did on that. Having said that, I'm going to vote against the motion for one simple reason. I don't think this is the year because of the pandemic. I think something this important, I think we need to make sure that we've had all our meetings and that the public consultation be uninhibited so that everybody can have their say. I'm sure that won't happen. There'll be some sort of restrictions on the public consultation. So for that reason, I'm gonna vote against the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Talbot.
Thank you, worship. First of all, I echo Counselor Petter's comments about the individuals that came up with this proposal. The public should know that the first time the rest of council saw this proposal was Friday when we received our agenda. Had no, we knew there was discussions going on, but we had no idea of the boundary lines. And I agree with Counselor Petter and his comments about public consultation, but I also do not agree with the bound the boundary lines. And the map that was provided to us was awful. Didn't matter how many times I tried to enlarge it. I couldn't read it, and I was even this morning, someone had called me about it, and I'm going, no, I think you're wrong. And he goes, nope, pretty sure I'm right. And I'm looking and looking. It was awful. So the person was right. I had been wrong. So it was even worse than what I had originally anticipated. So I I don't think we should be doing this right at the moment. We have more lands than we can service presently. We just did a huge boundary adjustment with Southwest Oxford. This this wouldn't, this land would not be developed or serviced for a few more years to come. So I don't think a delay in this is going to make a lot of difference. So I won't be supporting going forward, and I do want a recorded vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? And we'll go Counselor Schattenberg first, and then Counselor Lauder.
Okay, first of all, to through the mayor, to somebody who was on the on the committee and meeting with the Isora Tavistock folks, and and so I want to thank Patrice Hildery from the taxation side of the and the treasury side of the city Woodstock, and certainly our C I O David Query for the for the amount of efforts they've put into, and not only that, it's knowing some of the history of of some of the recent attempts, even with the Isora Tavistock to do a boundary adjustment, let alone with some of the ones that have been successful, Southwest Oxford and Norwich. I just want to see if the the C I O can give everyone who's viewing this maybe just a quick background, and and the reason I'm I'm curious about that is that maybe discuss population projections and and the Hempson Report, even the report that was out last week that essentially said sort of per capita Woodstock, per capita, like based on the size of our community now versus the size, it could be twenty years from now, that Woodstock's the fastest growing community in in Ontario. And take it as good or bad, because some people think, well, you don't want to grow too fast. I can understand that, but see if our C I O David Query's got a statement on that, especially with regards to the Hempson Report that came up a couple of years ago, too.
Thank you, your worship, through to Counselor Schattenberg. The the county had to do an update of its population projections last year in twenty twenty to respond to the the pace of growth that the city's been experiencing. Normally, these type of population projections are done like every five years, and they're usually, you know, wrapped around a census cycle. The last census, of course, was two thousand and sixteen. This is a census year, so we will get some fresh data. But we don't have that yet. So the the county population projection had to be adjusted because quite quite frankly, the pace of growth in the city was so significantly different than than their their earlier projections, which were just a few years prior to that. The the that that updated amended study the county had completed indicated the city would experience population increase of around over nineteen thousand people in the next twenty-five years. Over seventy-three hundred new households in the next twenty-five years. And 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 in May of last year, the province actually amended the provincial policy statement that gives direction to planning departments across the province that they should amend their planning horizons for things like land, land supply from twenty years to twenty-five years. So the this the city, in terms of our current land supply, measured against what we're looking forward in these projections is there's a significant shortage. The planning department was was confident that we have a three-year land supply, but that's where the confidence stops. There there's certainly not a ten-year, there's certainly not a ten-twenty year, there's certainly not a twenty-five-year land supply. Looking across the city, we have Sally Creek, the the non-condo area of Sally Creek. It's it's completing this year. It will be out of lots. Hartley Farm will be out of lots this year. Lunar is on the downside now. They probably have thirty, forty percent of the land supply before they're out of lots. Kingsman in the north is in the midst of servicing a very large area. You'll see a lot of streets being graded right now. And it's roughly like four or five hundred lots, all of which we've been advised have been sold. And so the building department is bracing now for the influx of a mass of permits, which is not the first time they've seen this from Kingsman Homes. The Meadows Golf Course, of course, is next in line on the north side of the city. This will be the last year for golf on the meadows. And earthwork is scheduled to start on that that parcel in the fall. Now, the meadows, I believe it has roughly a thousand units associated with it. So it it's going to, it's going to provide us with a little bit of land supply. But that, you know, we have one farm east of that, which is triangular in nature, and then we're out. Looking at Southwest Oxford, there were only two farms in that boundary adjustment. And then the developable area in the combined farms would be in the, you know, roughly a hundred and twenty acres. Which, you know, at the pace of development right now, it it's it's really only a two or three-year land supply. So the 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 end result of all of the 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 big picture view of land supply in the city is the inventory is getting extremely tight. And when inventory gets tight, affordability goes the wrong way. And you know, I think we're all seeing that. It's not the only factor that's driving affordability, but it's certainly going to be a bigger factor as the land supply gets tighter and tighter. And so having a proper and appropriate amount of land available for development in the city is 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 a very important factor. And and this proposed boundary adjustment is the way to address it. In terms of of the of the geography of the boundary adjustment, it it's it's a fair statement to say that the Boundary Adjustment Committee has very little influence on on the the architecture of the geography that's selected. It it is a very difficult negotiation, always when you're dealing with a boundary adjustment. And there are many factors that go into which way a boundary adjustment can go and how big it can be, and rarely this the city as the recipient of the boundary adjustment is never in the driver's seat of making the final determination of where it can go. The important thing for us, though, is that we don't do planning on a farm depth by farm depth basis. We can, it's very difficult to do community planning on a one hundred acre farm size alone. You cannot plan community parks, you cannot plan stormwater management features, you cannot plan street architecture one farm at a time very well. And the city is now getting to a a size where we'll need to be considering a third fire hall. And the third fire hall triggers a need for upwards of twenty firefighters to service it. And there's a significant cost associated with that. And so the important thing in any boundary adjustment, when you're knowing that you're needing to add a third fire hall, is that wherever that fire hall is located, you want to be certain that that fire truck can drive four to five minutes in each direction from that fire hall and have taxable assessment just to to provide service for. We want to be sure that we can spread the benefit of that fire service, the enhanced fire service to as much taxable assessment as is possible. And you can't do that when you're doing boundary adjustments on a hundred acre farm parcels at a time. So that's the reason for the massing of the land. And and the 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 size of the land that is is before council this afternoon.
Thank you, Counselor Lauder.
Thank you. Through to Mr. Query, through the merit of Mr. Query, could you also explain what the city's role is in the relationship to the county official plan re-resignment? Could you also explain um what the city's role is in the relationship to the county official plan re-residential growth?
Uh, your, your worship through to councillor Lauder, certainly, uh, that the city is one of the three urban settlement areas in the official plan, um, has a, a responsibility to provide the, uh, the, the, the growth um, in the county. So the growth is to be primarily and predominantly directed to the urban settlement areas, of which Woodstock is the largest. In the two thousand and twenty um comprehensive review that was just completed by the county of Oxford, um, the, the, the study indicated that sixty-four percent of the growth in the county in that last historical study period went to the city of Woodstock. Now, when they cast their view forward in terms of projections going forward, they, they moderated that, indicating that they felt that the city would only get fifty-one percent of the growth going forward. So it's extremely conservative when you look back and it was sixty-four and going forward, it's only fifty-one. So it's important to take this into consideration, even when you're looking at those projections that the county had completed, that it's premised on a moderation of how much is actually being built in Woodstock.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councillor Tate?
Uh, through the mayor, um, I'm going to support the motion, but only to go um for public input. I agree with both councillor Petter and councillor Talbot, their comments. I think it will be difficult to get um a full response from the public, but I want, after all the work that's gone into this, I want at least to get um what we can from the public. I know I already had one email this morning and had lots of comments. My issue is, um, not only the boundary, which I, I understand, we don't have any control over that, but I also don't like the terms. Um, residential doesn't pay for itself. And as the CIO said, we will need another um fire hall and the bigger we get, the more it costs. So we, we'll need more police, we'll need more city staff. It just goes on and on. Um, I understand we are targeted for growth, but right now I think the growth that we've had hasn't been completely managed, maybe the way it should have been. When I look at some of the residential areas that we've done and, um, but I will support this going to public consultation. And I just want to remind the public, this is only going to public consultation. This is not the final vote. It will come back. Thanks.
Thank you. And uh, let's see councillor Accioni?
Thank you, your worship. I just want to commend my fellow uh members of council as well on that committee. A lot of work was put into this, a lot of work was discussed about the growth and everything else. And uh, speaking with some of the farmers in the area that have reached out to me, since this has gone kind of public, they've uh indicated that this is some of the, the poorer farmland as well. So it only helps the case of uh where to grow versus some other areas. Um, anyways, i- it's, it's tough. I do suggest that we all do go to the public, let them decide they are going to be the residents and uh kind of go from there. So I'm certainly going to be voting in favor of this, even though all the terms and everything, we weren't always agreeing on. It's certainly a much better deal than nothing, looking at the growth and the lack of affordable housing we have. Uh, we certainly need to get something planning and having a larger area certainly helps us. Thank you. I'll be in favor.
Thank you. Further discussion? And councillor Schadenberg?
Yeah, I guess through the mayor again, I'd certainly be voting in, in favor of. I just want to sort of reiterate the fact that this is just a, a proposal to go to the public, because the map could certainly change, some of the numbers could certainly change or evolve over time. And even when you look at the map, there's the, there's a section right at Towne-Tribut eleven where the Canada Outdoor Farm Show is in the seventeenth, or like to call it Tollgate Road, there's actually just north of that, which is Canada Outdoor Farm Show, essentially parking for them. And they do do some exhibits on the west side of County Road, Towne-Tribut eleven, too. So really, uh, one of the things that's going to be happening geography-wise is that everything to do with the Canada Outdoor Farm Show would be coming into the city of, of Woodstock as far as the, the parcels of land go. So it's, it's not like you're going to be building houses uh there immediately anyway, or if not twenty, twenty-five or thirty years from now. And, and there's so many other things that have to be looked at in the secondary plan. And one thing to sort of say, well, you're going to bring in whatever, five hundred residential units, could be well over a thousand, but each unit is also within an apartment building. So an apartment building itself could be one hundred units all on, onto itself, obviously. I know I'm stating the obvious, but then you start looking at retail um components that could be coming up on, on the north side of the Piddock there, too, in those, in those subdivisions. So it's not going to be, say, thirteen hundred acres or two thousand acres, all residential either. That, that's a, that's a for certain, too. But at this point in time, I'd like to see it go towards the, towards the public. And, and these sort of Tavistock obviously has to approve going to the public as well, not just our council.
Thank you. Councillor Talbot?
Thank you, worship. One thing I should have said um earlier, when we did the boundary adjustment with southwest Oxford, the lands that we took in, uh, the farmlands we took in were crop farming. Um, the area, when I could barely read the map of this new um proposal, there is a livestock operation on it. And there's also a very large operation uh across the road. So we ran into the same problem when we were doing um where Kingsman and that are all going, um, or with the old meadows and that, we have to worry about MDS. And um, it, these people, this is their livelihood, they're passing these farms down through generations. So you build too close to them and then all of a sudden, they aren't able to farm like they used to be able to farm. So different going from crops to livestock and then having to worry about MDS. So I, I'm just not comfortable with this one. And like I said, I won't be supporting it. But I'm sure the public was, is going to make it very well-known at the public meeting.
Thank you. And did I see councillor Lauder's hand again? Okay, go ahead.
Uh, just my final comment, that I believe it is important to go to the, uh, the public, take the proposal forward. Um, we've talked about boundary adjustments for um that we've had, should be doing this. And um, so we have, as a committee, put this together and it's been a long, hard go of it. And um, I think it, it should go to the public consultation. If that uh is not a go, then that's what we live with. And um, but we have made our attempt and uh that's why I will support it.
Thank you. And uh, I think that's it for comments, other than all that and my own as well at this point. First off, I would like to thank the committee. So councillor Connie Lauder, who has been uh charged with many boundary adjustment committees in the past over your various uh terms of service on council. So thank you for your expertise, as well as your ability to understand and crunch those same numbers that our director of administrative services, the treasurer, would be working on uh as, as those discussions took place. And uh councillor Jerry Accioni, thank you very much for uh your service on the committee. And I know that uh, uh, you worked pretty hard around your schedule to uh be involved as much as possible with those meetings. And, and here today, even uh while you're taking a, a well-deserved, long-awaited uh mini-vacation here in Ontario in that motorhome, and I'm envious of the view I see out that side window. Uh, thank you very much that technology was able to have you here with us today. And of course councillor Schadenberg, uh, your first time serving on a, a committee like this. And a lot of information coming during those discussions. And I know that uh you took that all in stride. And, and at the same time, with the way that you carry yourself in your, in the community with your other vocation, you've heard a lot of input from the public directly. So thank you for your service on that committee. Um, for myself, I uh, I, I understand the concerns that uh council has. I think we're going to see uh for the date, it would probably take place in August. And we'll have our next new window of uh restriction lifting uh through the uh COVID pandemic, unless uh something drastically changes, but it seems like we're on the right track. Um, I've had quite a few points of contact with concerned individuals from uh both sides uh in the last few days. Of course, some individuals who have looked at the terms and maybe think the terms are uh a little too rich when you consider the, the residential costs, as we already heard about the need of a future fire hall and additional services with the police. And uh, of course, all that comes with building a community and making sure that we serve everyone with the same quality of life that everybody has come to expect in the friendly city. Now, I've also heard from individuals that uh think it wasn't quite enough land. Uh, I've heard from some who thinks it's too much land. Uh, one of the things that's more concerning is uh some of the misinformation that has been out there. And it's hard to uh alleviate that uh misinformation and make sure the facts are shared properly. If we don't have uh the public meeting where we can get everybody involved and that is, has concerns or is affected uh there to hear the proper answers all at once, well, especially with social media and some of the uh comments that have been pointed out to me again, that this is the, the city doing backroom deals. Well, that's not true. These committees were authorized by council and uh they were duly uh called with the clerks present from Isora and from the city of Woodstock. And of course, here today, brought to a public meeting to uh Woodstock City Council. And uh, I guess it'd be in a few days to Isora, Tavistock Council to go ahead and initiate that next step of public consultation. So I, I really want to make sure we have the opportunity for people to have the proper facts. Um, a few of the other misconceptions I've heard is that this is the city buying land. Uh, the city does not buy land for residential. This is, this is about including geography within the city limits for future potential. So uh, I'll be voting in favor of going to the public meeting. I want to make sure we get all of the correct information out to the public and hear all of the concerns from everyone before we uh raise our hands on uh the final verdict of this. And of course, uh, I do understand when we look at uh what we approved earlier in the agenda with uh our, our expansion of the uh business park uh off of Pitulo. Um, we know that there's a lot of piles of dirt that have been moving around in the friendly city, both for new industry and jobs, as well as all of that rapid growth in the residential section. As our CIO mentioned as well about the stacks of permits that come in. And when you see the uh next phase of the development north of Piddock, and uh one house has started construction within that area, but every lot is pre-sold. Now, we also have great opportunities where we don't have to necessarily expand services. But of course, with COVID, we've seen a few delays. There's uh quite a few infill lots within the city and uh some plans coming forward for uh intensification, some new apartment buildings. And we spoke about uh the affordable housing crisis and recognized that and had numerous discussions here at this council and including a, a piece of business that'll be next up on the agenda. And we'll have opportunities along the housing continuum to see some of that dust settle from some of this new infill and apartments that'll be coming. But I'm going to be voting yes to going to the public meeting with this, so we can hear all of the concerns. And uh then make that final decision at that point on whether we go ahead at this time or not. So I think that's probably enough discussion on this. So again, thank you to the committee. Thank you to the staff for your work so far. And depending on how this recorded vote goes, after I pass things over to our deputy clerk, uh, we may be sending out notifications and uh getting a, a meeting arranged with the public where we can discuss this. And with that, I'll pass things over to our deputy city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. Um, councillor Talbot?
No.
Councillor Accioni?
Yes.
Mayor Trevor Birch?
Yes.
Councillor Lauder?
Yes.
Councillor Schadenberg?
Yes.
Councillor Tate?
Uh, yes.
The motion carries.
You forgot councillor Petter.
No.
My apologies councillor Petter. Councillor Petter? Nope.
I, I get ignored all the time, Alicia. Don't worry about it. No.
The motion carries.
Thank you very much and a little more work uh on this. So after we hear back from East Sora Tavistock's uh meeting, then uh notices will go out if they vote in favor of going to the public. So we have uh our new business. So first one is uh councillor Lauder and uh seconded by councillor Tate. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, whereas the current affordable housing crisis in Canada and the quality of life implications caused by addiction, drug and opioid use and mental health issues are impacting communities in Canada and around the world. And whereas citizens in many communities are alarmed by the increase in homelessness, needle discarded in public spaces, visible signs of illegal activities and are disillusioned with the justice system response. And whereas policing and the justice system is not the solution to homelessness and addiction or an effective use of public funds. And whereas public health initiatives and programs aimed at addiction are provided by multiple ministries and agencies and are clearly inadequate and new long-term solutions are required. And whereas many of the programs and attempts from different agencies, government, organizations and ministry service providers have created a disjointed delivery system. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Woodstock City Council calls on the honourable Doug Ford, Premier of Ontario, to bring together the Ministry of the Attorney General, the Ministry of Health, the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, and the Ministry of Children, Community and Social Services to immediately work together on both short and long-term solutions, complete with funding, to take proper responsibility and action to address the affordable housing, homelessness and addiction crisis. And further, that this resolution be circulated to the honorable Ernie Hardiman, Oxford MPP, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario and all Ontario municipalities.
Thank you. Discussion councillor Lauder?
Um, thank you. Um, I, I requested this resolution in the hopes that other municipalities will support it. It's important that the, these provincial ministries um here and are aware of the need of our communities, of these issues we are facing with homelessness, addiction and illegal activities. What is happening is not fixing the issues at this, at this time. And it's not just in Woodstock. This is happening in many communities uh throughout the province. And I think that there is some other ways that we, this has to be dealt with. So that's why I have brought this forward.
Thank you, councillor Tate.
Uh, through your worship, yes, I'd like, like to thank councillor Lauder for bringing this forward. Um, working with clerk to get some proper wording on this. This is a very important issue. And as councillor Lauder said, this is um happening in every municipality when you talk to people. Um, Port Colburn, councillor Lauder talked to her granddaughter who lives far north and they're having the same issues. So it's, I think it's bigger than any municipality can handle. I think it's a big issue that the province needs to step in and help everybody because we can't do it on our own. Um, from my understanding, our CIO has had some very good discussions with the county and working on immediate um problems here. But I do think it's a bigger picture for everybody. So thanks for bringing that forward.
Thank you, councillor Talbot.
Thank you, worship. I just want to commend councillor Lauder for bringing uh the motion forward as well. Um, I had had a two-hour conversation with um uh our MPP, Ernie Hardiman, about this. And that's basically what I said to him. I said, we can't do this as a community by ourselves. We need help from the province. And uh especially the different ministries that um councillor Lauder um mentioned. Um, a- a- and again, this isn't just Ontario's problem. This is, like, we got it right across the board. So I mean, um, if you look out west, Vancouver, um- is in dire straits as well too and um, it, it's just trying to find out how we can help these individuals um, to get back into society and um, we can't do it on our own. We're trying and we've been trying. Um, so I, I hope that the province really does take notice of this request.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And Carrie's unanimous. And next up, we have councillor Schadenberg's and is there a seconder? Councillor Talbot. Go ahead councillor Schadenberg. You had your practice earlier and you get to do it all again.
Moved by councillor Mark Schadenberg, seconded by councillor Sandra Talbot. Uh, whereas section six point zero point one of the Environmental Assessment Act requires that a proponent mentioned in subsection three shall in accordance with the subsection five obtain municipal support for the up to undertaking from each local municipality as defined in subsection four. And that the proponent shall provide to the ministry a copy of a municipal council resolution for each local municipality in respect of which municipal support is required under subsection four indicated the municipality supports the undertaking to establish a waste disposal site. That is a landfilling site and whereas Walker Environmental Group has proposed that the southwest landfill be located in Zora Township. And whereas the township of Zora is a local municipality is defined in subsection four of the act and has passed a resolution that does not support the undertaking to establish this waste disposal site. And whereas the city of Woodstock is not a local municipality as defined in subsection four of the act, but wants to indicate its support for the decision of Zora Township. Uh, therefore be it resolved that the city of Woodstock does not support the undertaking to establish a waste disposal site as proposed in Zora Township and that this resolution be sent to the town of Ingersoll, the township of southwest Oxford, township of Zora, Oxford County. Uh, offices, the Oxford MPP, Ernie Hardiman, the Minister of the Environment, Conservation of Parks, the Ministry of the Municipal Affairs and Housing, the Opal Stop the Dump Alliance and Walker Environmental Group.
Thank you. Discussion. Councillor Schadenberg.
Kind of mentioned, we talked about the subsection four and all those and who's, who's actually a host. Obviously Zora Township would have been or as Walker Industries is defined as the host and they've voted against this. Um, Ingersoll and southwest Oxford are both within the three point five kilometer radius of the proposed site. Uh, so they were in, in effect in a vote against the, the motion as well to allow Walker Industries to form the southwest landfill, the Carmuse location. Uh, but because there's been so much work in the county of Oxford and such a cohesive, uh, I guess you can call it a fight or, or a, a work or a petition against this, including the Oxford people against the landfill and the amazing work that Brian Smith has done. I go to the Saturday morning market just about every Saturday and there's Brian with his up-to-date newsletters and so, so forth. Uh, updating everybody as to what the latest is on the possibility of having the southwest landfill brought into Zora Township and of course, Zora Township's voted against it with their mayor Marcus Ryan. And it was also at county council, maybe Sandra Talbot could talk about what happened at county council yesterday uh, at their meeting, but uh, so much work has been done and I'm on the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority Board and boys, water ever precious and the water table is precious. Everything to do with uh, with water and, and maintaining our water systems and not accepting the, the garbage from another community is uh, very, very important, especially when we've done so much work in Oxford County with uh, zero. Trying to keep the Salford landfill site in theory going on and, and its usefulness for thirty, forty, fifty years and forever.
Thank you councillor Talbot.
Thank you worship. Um, uh, this is like sort of the light at the end of the tunnel. It's been a nine, nine plus, nine years plus, I think that this has been going on and hopefully this will bring some um, end to the fight. Um, that's been going on. Mind you, I don't think Walker's going to get up quite that easily, but um, I think they're still going to be hanging around, but just as councillor Schadenberg had mentioned, at one time our landfill um, was only going to last us, I think till twenty twenty. Well, that was last year. Because of our good stewardship of land and landfill. Um, that is extended. I can't remember. You might be able to remember your worship with the actual end date of um, the uses, but it, we have extended it um, so much just because we've consciously are recycling and, and, and what we've been sending um, to Salford. So th- this proposal has been a thorn in, in many sides and a lot of people have spent a lot of hours um, working to stop this. So um, you know, kudos. And, and like I said, let's hope this is the light at the end of the tunnel. Council supported um, not being willing hosts. Um, and um, yesterday at county council, so let's, let's hope that um, we can put it all behind us.
Thank you. Um, let's see. I've had a lot of the stats and dates and years for other motions that we brought forward in the past at uh, county council. But if I remember correctly, I think one of the studies that would have come out in two thousand and one said that the landfill of ours uh, which by that point, it would have been a ski hill by twenty sixteen. So by two thousand and two, we had initiated the bag tag program and uh, to encourage people to reduce, reuse, recycle. And during that time of examining people's habits and having education at the schools. We were able to change that name of the landfill that used to be called a dump. And I think the warden yesterday at the county tried to use uh, the terminology, but he, he missed uh, uh, the first one, which was dump. Yeah, we went dump to landfill to waste management facility. And now I think we're a waste management educational. Maybe it'll be a resort in the future. With the help of our young people encouraging everyone, that uh, last study that we heard at county council. No consultant or engineer would go beyond the forty-year calculation officially. So they would call it forty-plus years of life that was left. It was probably closer to seventy. So we went from, we would have had a landfill that was a ski hill enclosed already a couple of years ago to now a waste management facility that'll continue for generations to come. And there's gonna be room for even more improvements. And part of all of that hard work, both with the staff here at the city, such as the environmental depot and uh, staff at the county and the foresight of uh, our politicians, our elected officials from previous terms, both at the city and at the county. I think along the way that has really helped invigorate the community with that nine-plus-year fight. Uh, so the Opal and the Stop the Dump Alliance and all of their hard work. And then to see our neighbors championing this and getting other municipalities involved. So uh, seeing uh, individuals like Mayor Kamisky from Ingersoll, when he was uh, away at conferences in Ottawa or Toronto or any of those items where he was uh, advocating and learning about how they could bring different programs to their community. He also held that banner high about having choice. So, and yesterday, of course, at uh, county council, all three of the city of Woodstock county council representatives supported our neighbors in that resolution as well. So I think we have a lot to be proud of as a community. And I think as, as citizens of Woodstock, one thing that uh, we hold very near and dear. And it may seem unrelated, but is, it's the great water that we have. We have some of the best drinking water available anywhere in the world. Uh, I know I hear once in a while from individuals, they'll turn on their tap and they think they're smelling chlorine or whatnot. Well, every so often we flush those pipes to make sure there's none of that uh, calcium buildup. We don't add sodium fluoride or any of those nasty uh, chemicals to our, our water supply. We have natural minerals and everything else that uh, keep us healthy. And uh, I think our water supply, when we look at our groundwater here, we have enough water that we could have a city of three hundred thousand people. We could have manufacturing facilities on the scale of ten Toyotas and still have enough water. And we look at how many other communities downstream of us also rely on groundwater. You think of a city like London, almost four hundred thousand people. And they don't have that same ability or blessing that we have here with our natural environment. They have to have a pipe, a straw to Lake Huron up by ground bend. They also have another straw, a pipe down to Port Stanley to get water from Lake Erie. One of the major concerns about that location of the dump. One of the largest lime quarries anywhere in the world is what if that liner ever broke? What will it do to the groundwater supply of all of southwestern Ontario? And I think that's why when we look at the way we operate as a community, we're not just concerned about what takes place within that map that we were discussing earlier with boundary adjustments. We're concerned about the greater community, our friends and neighbors. And uh, I thank councillor Schadenberg for, of course, bringing this forward. Uh, we have no official say, as the motion says. But it demonstrates that we as a council, representing the citizens of Woodstock care about our friends and neighbors downstream. And all of these aspects are so related to each other, how we handle waste, how we handle our natural supplies. Because some of us have grandchildren already. I don't have grandchildren yet, but when I raise my hand to make decisions, I'm thinking about the grandchildren and great-grandchildren that I don't have yet. I'm not making decisions based on whether I'm gonna make a company happy or whether I'm gonna get another vote in a future election. I make decisions for those generations into the future that we're here to protect and make a good quality of life and smart decisions. So uh, hats off to everybody who's handled this issue for all of these years. And I know that there's a few individuals that probably get a little more limelight right now in the current time who haven't handled that uh, issue all the way along. But we all stand on the shoulders of giants because that's the type of people we are here in Oxford County. So I don't know, I talked a lot on this issue. Further discussion? Seeing none? You've heard the motion. All those in favor? And Carrie's unanimous. I hope I got the right dates on from the dump to the landfill to the waste management and when it was gonna be a ski hill. But uh, kudos to everybody. So next up, we have the bylaws and uh, they'll be moved by councillor Lauder and a seconder.
Uh, moved by myself, cut second by councillor Schadenberg, that the following bylaws be given a first and second reading, nine four seven two one dash twenty-one, a bylaw to amend the city of Woodstock Municipal Code, chapter one thirty-four. Nine four seven two dash twenty-one, a bylaw to amend the city of Woodstock Municipal Code, chapter one two seven, municipal bylaw enforcement officer. Nine four seven three dash twenty-one, a bylaw to amend the city of Woodstock Municipal Code, chapter thirty-two, art gallery advisory board. Nine four seven four dash twenty-one, a bylaw to amend the municipal chapter four sixty-six, fire route designation. Uh, nine four seven five dash twenty-one, a bylaw to amend the traffic bylaw, eight oh two one dash oh four, is amended.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. Discussion. Seeing none? All those in favor? And Carrie's unanimous. Councillor Lauder?
Moved by myself, second by councillor Talbot, that the following bylaws be given a third and final reading, nine four seven one dash twenty-one uh, through nine four seven five dash twenty-one inclusive.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. All those in favor? And Carrie's unanimous. And today for addresses, we'll start with councillor Tate.
Thank you. Um, I wanna, since we're going to phase three, I meant to comment before when we, I think when we went to phase one and our staff had to rush around and get our sprinkler pads ready. I meant to comment at the one council meeting, but um, just so the public's aware, they came in on the Saturday morning and they worked late Friday night because we got noticed really late and we were supposed to have an inspection that hadn't been scheduled. So um, you know, sometimes we get complaints about our staff. We have really good staff. And they went in on their own time and did all that work. So we, I think that weekend it was really hot, so our sprinkler pads were open. And I apologize for not mentioning it before. Um, and just my other comment, I wanna send my um, thoughts out to Mike Bragg's family. I've known them a very, very long time. Um, Mike was at one time the CEO for the county. I think I was only there one year when he was there, but I knew him before that. A little known fact about Mike is he was one of the original people in the group. I think there was five or six of them that met uh, weekly at my parents' house to discuss the community complex. He was just with the board of health at the time, didn't do it for any other reason, but they saw, this group of people saw that there is a need in the community. They worked with, Paul Plant was part of that group, so they were working with the city. Um, super, super guy, very intelligent. We will miss people like that in our community. Um, but instead of complaining and sending nasty stuff and marching and protesting, they actually take a positive approach to the city. And they don't do it for any recognition for themselves, but just for the benefit of the city and um, I miss that. Sometimes the bigger we get, we miss the community feeling and uh, he will be deeply missed. That's it.
Thank you. And I think uh, I'll, I'll go a little out of turn here just to add a bit to that. I know uh, uh, even within my own interaction, one of the first days when I started employment at the county of Oxford uh, and I met Mike Bragg at that point, he uh, had recently been appointed to be the director at the board of health at that point in time. Uh, and once we introduced each other, uh, his first statement was I was one week working at the county of Oxford, the first weekend of my job. And I was in charge of septic inspections. And I got to meet your father while he was working on a subdivision out in one of the uh, villages here in Oxford County. And wow, I learned a lot in a short amount of time about how passionate people are to make better quality of lives for people in the community. And you're, if you're even half as passionate as your father was back then when I met him, you're gonna go far. Now, I don't know if we ever agreed on some of the numbers. I don't think I worked too directly on uh, any of the public health numbers at that point. I was dealing with other issues at the county. But of course, once he was uh, promoted to being the CAO and he did that service for a few years. One of the reports that uh, had been requested was an update based on a projection I had given to council about five years earlier. And it had a lot of moving targets when that projection was given to them five years earlier. And he asked for a report that actually showed what the actuals were at this point and we were dealing with millions and millions of dollars over multi-year periods. Uh, councillor Talbot and Tate would understand if I say this was about relationship to the OMPF funding. And the uploading and downloading of ODSP and Ontario Works. And a lot of assumptions, a lot of moving targets. And when I took the report down to his office and on multi-million dollar yearly figures, it was within a few thousand dollars. And his response to me was, great. Even a blind squirrel finds the occasional nut. Now, after uh, changing roles and I, I came to sit in this chair. Of course, that's when I got to see in his retirement, the other Mike Bragg and the service that he gave at the Woodstock Hospital Board fundraising for other events in the community, much like councillor Tate mentioned about how many years earlier giving of his time with other interested community members like your parents for that development of the community complex. And uh, how about the old-time baseball games shared between us and our, our sister city? Uh, of course, for Canada Day and for uh, the US July Fourth holidays. And when I was watching him catch a baseball at Victoria Park in that old garb from historical ballgames without a glove. Wow, was I impressed with his skills. Anyway, uh, he'll be sorely missed in the community and I think with that all. Anyway, he'll be sorely missed in the community. And I think with that, I'll move over to councillor Talbot because she might have even more to add.
Thank you, Worship. Yes, the sending condolences to Mike's family. I've known Mike a long time and it's it's so hard to go back and just think of all the things that been involved with together. Board of Health, I was sat on the Board of Health when it used to be a committee of councils, Chair of Board of Health. And just his friendship and guidance over the years and when he became CAO at the county, Mike never changed. He was just a great guy. And but I got to have, play baseball with him because I was on the active team as well too. And I have to say, I was the behind, which is the back catch. And I think Mike was one of the few team members who didn't drill the ball at me because as you said, we didn't have gloves. He was always a gentleman, always lots of fun. I was just reminiscing to myself about some of our trips to the US and Slovenia. He and Kelly and when Aaron was little, we just had, he was just great. And like I said, always a gentleman and just always community and family. Just a wonderful guy and going to be very missed. Just going forward, going to phase three tomorrow, I just hope people don't get too excited and mess up. The vaccine, double vaccinations are really coming along. Ontario has done amazing. But we're still not there yet. And we want to be nice to, when we reach August, that we could sort of resume some type of normal, but we can't do that if we let our guard down. So please, everyone, still continue to wear a mask, continue to wash your hands, be safe and enjoy the summer. Thank you.
Thank you. And you just made me think about when you mentioned about the committee of council and the Board of Health. I would have to double check with the archivist or maybe HR at the county, but I think he was one of the longest-serving employees in county history.
I think it was over 40 years.
Over 40 years. I'm not sure if he hit 45, but I think he was one of the longest-serving employees.
I remember, I was just going to say, I remember Mike, I believe he was the one that were having to deal with SARS when we dealt with SARS back in the early 2000s. So Mike was there a long time.
Yeah, must have been doing something right. All right. Thank you for that. And let's see, we'll go councillor Lauder.
Thank you. I also would like to send my condolences to the Bragg family. At one time, we lived across the road from one another when we were on B Street. And I recently, when I was out on my walks on the trails, I think it was at Rose Park, I met both he and his wife out for their, their little walk. And it was nice to see, see that he was able to get out for that walk. And the art gallery will be open come Tuesday, August the 3rd with a new suite of exhibitions, including the community favorite visual elements, 63 Annual Jury Exhibition. You can view the exhibition online by going to the gallery's website and vote for your favorite work. And I also like to report, I went to the art gallery, to the library last week and they're pleased to be able to be open to the public. So it's, it's great to be able to see these things starting to open again. And like councillor Talbot is saying, do it, do it and be careful. And hopefully I'll stay well for the rest of the summer and going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Schadenberg?
Thanks. I have a bit of a roundabout story, I guess. People probably know that I'm a bit of a social media buff myself and we all get frustrated when, when there's odd comments that are kind of not well rehearsed or well researched. But my, my story is this, I remember Hard FM did a story a couple of weeks ago about the fact that we had counsel, they decided that it was fine that, that the art gallery can look into whether or not the West Side of Van Sitter Park could possibly be renamed and have a focus on the Bruce Flowers and Florence Carlyle as far as art galleries go. And I know our, our director of art galleries, Mary Reed is still on board here right now. But I thought it was a nice story that Hard FM didn't post it on their website. So obviously right from there, that link from one from Hard FM to Hard FM's Facebook page. And then if you started looking at Hard FM's Facebook page, there was over 100 comments about people talking about Van Sitter Park and whatnot. But in the story that the Hard FM did, there was a link to how you could actually participate in the process through the art gallery and the art gallery's website and the fact that Mary Reed was looking for information and background and thoughts. So just want to let everyone know that maybe it's, it's important to make sure that if somebody's asking for comments, that you're getting the comments to the right person. Doesn't matter if it's a planning matter or what happens to be, or in this case, it's an art gallery matter. And I know Mary Reed's here, maybe she can maybe give us a quick, quick update as to how many responses she's had personally on, on that park for Van Sitter, the West Side of Van Sitter. Because honoring Florence Carlyle that way, we don't have enough parks named after women in the city of Woodstock to begin with. And this, the Bruce Flowers estate would be, would be terrific because it's a part of the time span that we were, we were looking at to receive comments.
Hi there. Thank you very much councillor Schadenberg. So to the mayor to answer councillor Schadenberg's question. So we did do an analysis of the comments from Hard FM. It was great that Hard FM did provide us with that promotional. However, the, the headline was a bit misleading. So what we had was a bit of a split. Most of the people who commented were a bit confused that we were actually getting away from the name of Van Sitter. In fact, the Van Sitter Park will still remain. But what is, but what is happening is that we're just trying to, you know, of course, now my phone is ringing in the middle of all of this. What we're trying to do is to acknowledge the efforts and the contributions that other members of our community have not been recognized for. So with Florence Carlyle and Bruce Flowers, who are somewhat missing from the history here in Woodstock. And, and, and that said, when you're asking about what the response was, very good through Hard FM. And again, we had an even split between sort of yeses and nos and then a number of ones who, you know, that just were not applicable or didn't understand the question. In terms of our own survey, we're seeing that, you know, similar results. And I'll be coming back to you guys in August with, with a, with a full report in regards to that. So but again, I do encourage people to, to, you know, use the proper channels to be able to make your wishes known so we can move forward to continue to improve our community.
Thank you. And let's see, I would also encourage people to get beyond the headline and, and read the details as well. Let's go with councillor Pedder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one quick item. I just want everybody to think about this summer. As the other councillors have mentioned, as of midnight tonight, I think we go into phase three. And the ball diamonds and the soccer fields and all the parks will be full. All the leagues are starting if they haven't already started. The kids are going to be everywhere. Please drive accordingly. Remember that these kids have been pent up for almost a year and a half. So they might not be quite, you know, controlled as they might, might be. So please look out for the, for the little guys. You know, it's, you know, it's in the middle of the summer because I just had sweet corn last night for the first time and boy, was it good. So if you get a chance to support your local market with the local corn, it couldn't be better right now. Having said that, I don't believe we meet for another month. So enjoy your summer, be safe. And as councillor Talbot said, make sure we don't get into another phase of bad stuff. So keep your social distancing, wash those hands and, and we'll try and get through the rest of this and never mention COVID again. Thank you.
Thank you. And if all of that holds, I'm sure we'll be getting sports updates from you in upcoming meetings. Councillor Accioni, let us know what it looks like out that window.
Yes, I am up here north. I'm staring right now at Lake Superior. So it's absolutely beautiful. This is the first time we've actually gone into a campsite. We've had the pleasure to stay at all free campsites, different areas along the route. Very, very private. It's been a phenomenal trip that way. It's amazing how much traveling you can do here in Ontario by itself. And we're about an hour and a half northwest of Sault Ste. Marie and pass free campsites along Lake Superior constantly. So I've enjoyed a few nights here. Really with the biggest news, unfortunately, I never heard about Mike Bragg. So to Kelly, I'm very sorry for your loss. I don't have a lot of the stories that some of the others do, but had the pleasure at quite a few different events and things to sit with you and talk about things. And I'm very sorry to hear that. So I'm very shocked. So I'm thinking of the Bragg family for sure right now. So sorry for your loss. And just everybody, please support local, continue supporting as much as you can. We're not through this. All the businesses after survive, especially with the, you know, baseball and soccer and everybody, everybody else coming back on. The teams are going to be looking for sponsors again. Remember who they usually go to is those different restaurants and local businesses. So try to support them as much as you can, of course. And if you are going to be doing any traveling, I highly encourage you to travel here in our own province. Keep money here as much as we can versus going south or whatever, whenever you can. That's what we decided. And on a side note, if you want, with these passes, you can get into any provincial park free of charge Monday to Thursday. We've just learned. So great to bring the motor home, motor home in here, fill up and do what we got to do. So Monday to Thursdays is free day passes. You can come into any Ontario park to enjoy and only charges you if you want to spend the night here or on the weekends. So just, it's a beautiful country. We live in beautiful province and explore it if you are going to be traveling at all. But from then on in, thanks, everybody. We'll see you. I'll be back in Woodstock next week and we'll see everybody in a month. Be safe.
Thank you. And I think I've added quite enough to this meeting already on some of the different issues. So I'll keep my closing comments very brief. Again, thank you to all of the staff here in the city of Woodstock for rapidly making the necessary changes as we go through the restriction lifting. You did phenomenal job on the other side. And now we can all breathe a little sigh of relief. And again, just remember, stay safe. We want to make sure that all of us stay on the good side of this so that we can enjoy these amenities more. So again, thank you to staff for your, your hard work and to all of the different service providers in the community that have had to kind of take the front line on a lot of these issues. I know that it's added a lot of stress, just as councillor Pedder mentioned about our young people finally getting to get out and enjoy some of those team sports. We look at some of the mental health, the negative aspects of what's been going on. And, and I, I see our community as being so resilient compared to some of the other communities around. We've taken a lot in stride, but there's still some individuals here in the community who need a little extra encouragement. So make sure you reach out to them, encourage them to get some of that sunshine and fresh air, vitamin C and D, all of the things that are so necessary for our immune system. And continue to show that care, checking in on individuals. And we will see everybody in August. So looking for a motion to adjourn. Moved by councillor Pedder, seconded by councillor Accioni.